If I could have your attention, please. If we would take a moment, I want to have a word of prayer. If you so desire, bow your head for prayer, please. Dear Lord, we gather here tonight to make decisions of our community. May we use only our best skills and judgment, keeping ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us and always act in accordance with the best of our community and our fellow citizens. Amen. Shay. No, no, we're doing something different. Ready? I'm showing six o'clock with the regular call correction, regular meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners, 6:30 PM, Tuesday, September the 17th. Come to order. Do we have somebody move to accept the agenda as published?
So moved.
We have a motion by District Three?
Second.
Second by District One. Any further discussion? Hold in favor, raise your right hand. Hold in favor, eye. Next, we're going to have the, y'all can sit down. We're doing things a little different because this is Constitutional Week. I should have announced that up front, but relying upon the agenda. So next, we're going to have the reading of the proclamation of Constitutional Week. In honor of Constitutional Week, September the 17th through the 23rd, whereas September the 17th, 2013, marks the 226th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention in Philadelphia in 1787. And whereas during Constitutional Week, it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation. And whereas we commemorate the legacy passed down from our nation's founders and recognize that our Constitution has stood the test of time and that because of our wisdom and foresight and those who shaped our founding documents and the sacrifice of those who have defended the country, we as Americans enjoy unprecedented freedom and opportunities. And whereas for more than two centuries, the Constitution has presided as the supreme law of the land, keeping our leaders true to American highest ideals and guaranteeing the fundamental rights to make our country a beacon of hope for all people in search of freedom and justice. And whereas together with the Bill of Rights, our Constitution is the backbone of our government and the basics of our liberties and while retaining its structure, our founding documents has grown with our nation's conscience, having been amended over the years to extend Americans' promise to citizens of every race, gender, and creed. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the week of September the 17th through the 23rd shall be known as Constitutional Week in Henry County, Georgia, during which time we join with other communities across the nation in recognizing the importance of our Constitution and reaffirming our rights and obligations as citizens of this great nation to protect us founding documents. The 17th day of September, 2013, Henry County Board of Commissioners, by Tommy Ann Smith, Chairman, Hattas Shay Matthews, County Clerk. Thank you. Having said that, I would like to recognize the Daughters of the American Revolution with lead in the pledge of the flag. If we will all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'd like to recognize Ms. Julie Gilbert. Be kind enough to honor us with the National Anthem.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the red ports we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Now I'd like to ask while you're still standing if you'll read with me the Americans' Creed that I gave out earlier. I believe in the United States of America as a government of the people, by the people, for the people, whose just powers are derived from the consent of the governed, a democracy in a republic, a sovereign nation of many sovereign states, a perfect union, one and inseparable, established upon those principles of freedom, equality, justice, and humanity for which American patriots sacrificed their lives and fortunes. I therefore believe it is my duty to my country to love it, to support its Constitution, to obey its laws, to respect its flag, and defend it against all enemies. Thank you. You may be seated. In 1950, since 1956, the United States of America has celebrated Constitution Week during September the 17th through the 23rd. We are proud of the fact that it was the Daughters of the American Revolution who petitioned Congress in 1955 to set aside these days annually to observe and honor our Constitution. It was signed into law on August the 2nd, 1956, and as Public Law Number 915, and was signed by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. As Daughters of the American Revolution, we continue to promote this important date to honor both our Constitution and its framers. We feel it is every American's duty, as the Americans' Creed said, to love our country, to support its Constitution, and to respect its flag. Thank you, Henry County Board of Commissioners, for this proclamation and the opportunity to open your meeting this the 17th day of September, which just happens to be the 226th anniversary of the signing. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Can we have a photo?
Yes, ma'am. Veterans Museum. Ms. Julie Ernst.
Good evening. I wanted to begin this evening by presenting you with a short video that Henry TV-14 put together regarding the Historical Veterans Museum to kind of showcase what we do, but also really to showcase what they do.
The Heritage Park Veterans Museum is another great amenity in Henry County and offers a glimpse into our nation's military past and present. Melissa Robinson has the story.
Henry County is rich in history and prides itself on its deep tradition of honoring its military. The Heritage Park Veterans Museum is a wonderful way to pay tribute as well as educate the public on the service and sacrifices made by our country's veterans.
The Veterans Museum started out at Nash Farm Park in just two rooms with a small collection. It made its permanent home here at Heritage Park in the Red Barn nearly two years ago, and since then, the collection has grown exponentially.
The Heritage Park Veterans Museum is a treasure trove of historical military memorabilia. On display are various uniforms, medals, vehicles, arms, books, photos, and other artifacts dating from World War I up through the present times.
The history here is huge.
Jim Joyce, Facilities Coordinator with the Henry County Parks and Recreation Department, runs the museum, and as the only employee, he has come to rely on a small army of dedicated veterans who volunteer their time to make the museum a success.
The volunteers for this museum, they come from every branch of service. We've got Army, Air Force, Navy, Marine Corps, from 32-years-old to 68-years-old. So they run the gamut. Of the nine volunteers, there are a total of eight combat tours amongst that group. A couple of them have served in two different combat tours. So they understand what each and every piece in here is, the history behind each piece, and they're able to convey that to people who come through the door.
Volunteers do everything from organizing the donations, to creating and rotating displays, to refurbishing rooms and hosting visitors, and each has his own reason for volunteering.
I started doing this a year ago, and it means so much to me because being a Vietnam veteran and everything, I've always wanted to be around other veterans who felt like I did and had similar experiences. And so I told my wife that I'd come down here to visit and I saw what a wonderful camaraderie there was, so I just couldn't wait to come down and do this. And to me, it's just like my second career. I'm a retired teacher. This is, to me, is like starting a whole new career of something I really like to do.
All the items displayed in the museum have been generously donated or lent, and they tell the tale of our military's history, many with personal stories of individual soldiers, some who paid the ultimate price for freedom. Visitors and veterans come from all over the metro Atlanta area to the museum to learn about history and share some of their own.
It also allows them a place where they can kind of reminisce and go back to a place in time where they were, which is important for a lot of us as veterans.
To me, it's just a great thing for the community. It's a wonderful citizenship tool, and it's something that every community should have if possible.
The Heritage Park Veterans Museum is located at 101 Lake Dale Road in McDonough. The museum is free and open to the public, Monday through Saturday, from 10:00 AM until 3:00 PM. While you're here, visit the Veterans Wall of Honor, located just up the hill from the museum in Heritage Park. For Henry County Update, I'm Melissa Robinson.
For more information about the Heritage Park Veterans Museum, please visit www.hcprd.org or call 770-288-7300.
Tonight, we would like to honor those who work at the museum, those who volunteer at the museum, both for their work there and for their service to our country, with a proclamation and certificates for each of those veterans. A proclamation in honor of the Historical Veterans Museum at Heritage Park and its staff of veteran volunteers. Whereas the Historical Veterans Museum in Heritage Park is a veritable time capsule of memorabilia, photographs, equipment, and supplies from each American conflict dating from World War I forward. And whereas each piece in the museum, whether it is a World War II motorcycle and sidecar to the flight suit of a pilot who flew missions over Germany, tells a story of the brave soldier who once used it. And whereas the Historical Veterans Museum's fascinating collection was curated from donations, and its staff is comprised almost entirely of volunteer American veterans who fought and served our country, each of whom has firsthand knowledge of the uniforms and medals, tools, and equipment on display. And whereas this tourism magnet attracts about 3,500 visitors a year, with visitors coming from 37 states, as well as the Netherlands, Germany, Great Britain, Canada, China, Croatia, France, Korea, and various countries in South America. And whereas the museum, together with the adjacent Veterans Wall of Honor, has been hailed as a preferred place for both veterans and their families to ponder, reflect, and heal from the trauma of combat. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that the Veterans Historical Museum at Heritage Park in McDonough, Georgia, is a source of pride for this community, and we wish to recognize it for its success in bringing our wartime history to life while honoring the men and women whose service and sacrifice made our way of life possible, as well as express our humble gratitude for those veterans who first bravely served our country and now are donating their time such that all who visit the museum have an opportunity to not only see and study the past, but hear firsthand accounts from soldiers in the United States military this 17th day of September, 2013. Henry County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I would also like to invite those veterans who volunteer there, and I'm going to name them. If you would please come forward and stay forward so that we can take a group photograph. That would be wonderful. The veteran volunteers are John Anzalone, Robert Brown, John Fisher, Richard McLeod, Tom Oaks, Jim Risher, Bill Steele, Lloyd Witt, and Darrell Woodall. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Oh, you sent me a decision now.
I'm going to ask you to punch it just a little bit. All right. Okay. Oops. Uh-oh. Just hold it in place. On the count of three. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three.
Next, we'd like to recognize Mr. Jerry Spears, problem with the dog in his neighborhood. If you would, come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you've got 15 minutes. Second call for Mr. Jerry Spears. Okay. Let the records indicate Mr. Spears was not here at this. Next, we'd like to recognize Mr. Steve Richardson for 15 minutes. State your name and address for the record, please.
Steve Richardson, 207 Wind Drive, Hampton, Georgia.
Did we got the mic on? Okay, I got you.
Steve Richardson, 207 Wind Drive, Hampton, Georgia. Apologize for not making the last meeting. Had a surgery and couldn't stand up. So anyway, long story short, to go over what I went over last time, the fire chief called me outside and said there was three tiers for an ambulance call, starting at $500. So no one knew those rates, so it goes 5, 6, and 750. Another thing I wanted to go over, and Mr. Chairman, you have a copy of the notes there. Second thing is, I just want to go over a basic tow. The definition of a tow is when you back up to an apparatus or a vehicle and you can load it without any incident. If this casualty, the car, is upside down, in a ditch, wrecked in any way that you have to do anything other than drive it up on the tow apparatus, then that is considered a recovery. So I just wanted to show the difference between a towing and recovery. Next, I'd like to go over the FAA Act of 1994. That's the Federal Aviation Administration Authorization Act of 1994. And what that is, is the airlines were wanting to deregulate. Well, Jimmy Hoffa's crew, obviously Jimmy wasn't there, were upset about the trucking industry, so they congress in their infinite wisdom through the trucking industry in the Aviation Administration Authorization Act. In so doing, the federal authority over interstate transportation is 49 U.S.C. 14501, which is the law, and it states, "Except as provided in Paragraph 2 and 3, a state, political subdivision of a state, or political authority of two or more states may not enact or enforce a law, regulation, or other provision having a force and effect of law related to a price, route, or service of any motor carrier, other than a carrier affiliated with a direct air covered by Section 14713, or any motor private carrier, broker, or freight forwarder with respect to transportation or property." Paragraph 2 is very clear about the restrictions. It says, "It will not restrict the safety regulatory authority of a state with respect to motor vehicles, the authority of a state to impose highway route controls or limitations based on the size and weight of a motor vehicle," which is basically the MCCD under Colonel McDonough, the Motor Carrier Compliance Division here in the state of Georgia. "It does not apply to the interstate transportation of household goods, and does not apply to the authority of a state or political subdivision of a state to an act or force of law, regulation, or other provision relating to the price of for-hire motor vehicle transportation by a tow truck, if such transportation is performed without the prior consent or authorization of the owner or operator of such motor vehicle." That is covered now by DPS, the Department of Public Safety, which used to be the Public Service Commission. That's private property trespass. In other words, if you put your car for sale at the Walmart or Lowe's and you go and leave it there, then Walmart has the authority to have your vehicle towed. It doesn't, that's what it's referring to there. So I just wanted to go over that with you guys, and just wanted to follow up with a couple of Supreme Court rulings. In 2002, there was a case of Ards Garage versus the City of Columbus. In 2013 of this year, in May of this year, Dan City Used Cars versus Pelkey. And in June of this year, the City of Los Angeles was involved in a case with the American Trucking Association. All three of those cases, and there's many others, but all three of those cases is very well represented that the government does not have the authority to tell anybody what they can charge out there, where they can go, and what they can do. However, lastly today, just want to mention the safety, the issues of it. This commission or the counties, the states have the authority to set down safety standards, and they have the authority to set down insurance standards. So that's all I have for today's meeting, if there's any questions.
I'm done unless you get any questions, sir. Okay.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you so much. Request for waiver penalties and our interest was removed based on the approval of the agenda as published, it's scratched out, and we didn't have time for the meeting to take this off and do a new agenda. So that's, this person requested that this be taken off the agenda. Next, we have consent agenda. From the consent agenda, if you read the consent agenda items, A, Exhibit 2, it's a resolution of the Board of Commissioners to approve purchase requisition number 35725, renewal of professional web hosting services, including basic assessor sites, building photos, eight map layers, online mapping module, and an online aerial photography. We have been entered into a one-year lease for these services since February the 15th of 2007. Next thing on the consent agenda is a request for approval of a memorandum of agreement. We have a resolution here, the resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners authorizing Henry County Emergency Communication Use of Communication Tower Space for a communication system assigned to the Georgia Department of Public Safety. We're going to do that and charge them $1 per year, and it'll be located at 1201 Old Jackson Road in Locust Grove. Resolution request for authorization to accept donation from City of Stockbridge. Resolution, do we have anybody here representing the City of Stockbridge for this presentation? Okay. Resolution of the Henry County Emergency Communication Center for the acceptance of funds from the City of Stockbridge in the amount of $1,000. Resolution request approval of an encroachment agreement with Atlanta Gaslight for the airport. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners to approve an encroachment agreement between Henry County and Atlanta Gaslight for the Henry County Airport. Just give, tell you what this is. We added 1,000 feet to the runway, and Atlanta Gaslight has had a pipe under that 1,000 feet. Next, we have the resolution request for adoption with short-term program and capital improvement. Short-term work program and capital improvements elements, annual update adoption, and amendment to the Henry County Comprehensive Plan. That would be the five items I would present to you for consent items, and if you approve this, you approve all the associated paperwork that goes along with this, it would take one motion to do that.
Mr. Shirk, can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
It's just really a point of clarification. On the item E, I just wanted to, the short term, I was going through the project list. You know, we had put in the SPOS, I saw a lot of our upcoming SPOS projects were listed there, but like the interchange, matching money was not, is that because this is short term and that would be more of a long-term type thing, or is, that was the only concern, the question I had was, sorry, Chair. I figured it was just a clarification.
No, that's a good question, and we actually did include language when we submitted the transmittal to the Atlanta Regional Commission, that if the SPOS does pass, we're going to come back and incorporate all of those projects that may not have been captured. The purpose of the STWP is to capture projects that we're going to accomplish within six years, and so we probably would not have started on that project within that timeframe, but if we do start it, we can certainly amend it, and it would not take any action before the board, but I would certainly bring it back if we're going to modify that list.
Because I had a meeting with Mr. Toby Carr last week, and one of the things he said is this all works if it's a priority, you know, for the county, and that's one of the things, I just want to make sure the ARC that were consistent on that part of it, but that makes sense.
Absolutely, and rest assured, we are actually in the process of preparing a RFP for our comprehensive transportation plan, and one thing we're going to look at as part of that scope of work is determining the location for any improvements along that corridor. So we hear you loud and clear, and we're going to make sure that it does get in our plan, and that ARC in the state recognizes that it is a priority.
Is that good enough for clarification? Takes one motion. Somebody move that we approved the consent agenda items as read and published.
I move to approve the consent agenda items 8A through E.
We have a motion from District Two. Here, a second.
Second.
Second from District Three. Any further discussion? Hold in favor, raise your right hand. I'm showing one, two, three, four, four to the extent of five. Got you. Okay. Did you get that, Madam Chair? District Four raised his hand. Okay.
funds from the City of Stockbridge in the amount of $1,000. Resolution request approval of an encroachment agreement with Atlanta Gaslight for the airport. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners to approve an encroachment agreement between Henry County and Atlanta Gaslight for the Henry County Airport. Just give, tell you what this is, it's, we added 1,000 feet to the runway, and Atlanta Gaslight has had a pipe under that 1,000 feet, so. Next, we have the resolution question of adoption with short-term program and capital improvement. Short-term work program and capital improvements elements, annual update adoption, and amendment to the Henry County Comprehensive Plan. That would be the five items I would present to you for consent items, and if you approve this, you approve all the associated paperwork that does go along with this, it would take one motion to do that.
Mr. Chair, can I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
It's just really a point of clarification. On the item E, I just wanted to, the short term, I was going through the project list, the, you know, we had put in the SPOS, and I saw a lot of our upcoming SPOS projects were listed there, but like the interchange, matching money was not, is that because this is short term and that would be more of a long-term type thing, or is, that was the only concern, the question I had was, sorry, Chair. I figured it was just a clarification.
No, that's a good question, and we actually did include language when we submitted the transmittal to the Atlanta Regional Commission, that if the SPOS does pass, we're going to come back and incorporate all of those projects that may not have been captured. The purpose of the STWP is to capture projects that we're going to accomplish within six years, and so we probably would not have started on that project within that timeframe, but if we do start it, we can certainly amend it, and it would not take any action before the board, but I would certainly bring it back if we're going to modify that list.
Because I had a meeting with Mr. Toby Carr last week, and he, one of the things he said is, this all works if it's a priority, you know, for the county, and that's one of the things, I just want to make sure the ARC that were consistent on that part of it, but that makes sense.
Absolutely, and rest assured, we are actually in the process of preparing a RFP for our comprehensive transportation plan, and one thing we're going to look at as part of that scope of work is determining the location for any improvements along that corridor. So we hear you loud and clear, and we're going to make sure that it does get in our plan, and that ARC in the state recognizes that it is a priority.
Is that good enough for clarification? Takes one motion. Somebody move that we approve the consent agenda item as read and published?
I move to approve the consent agenda items eight, A through E.
We have a motion from District Two, here a second.
Second.
Second from District, got three. Any further discussion? Call in favor, raise your right hand. I'm showing one, two, three, four, four to abstent, five. Got you. Okay. Did you get that, Madam Chair? District Four raised his hand. Okay. Let's move down to public safety, resolution question award of a bid for an annual contract to purchase body armor for the police department. Major Keith Goins. Good afternoon, or good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. Come before you tonight for this resolution, this is for the lowest bid in reference to our body armor. Body armor has a five-year expiration on it, so some of our body armor is coming due. The purpose of this was to enter into negotiations with the purchasing department to get the lowest bidding, which we've done, and in doing so, law enforcement supply of Georgia submitted the lowest overall bid. This contract would be for the purpose of one year, and could be renewed for additional, two additional one-year periods if chosen.
That's exhibit seven in your book. Anybody have any questions for the major while he's standing? If not, we have a resolution in the book that's published. The resolution of Board of Commissioners awarding a bid for the annual contract to purchase armor body. Okay. Have a motion to approve from District Four.
Second.
Second from District One. Any further discussion? Just for the record, would you say the low bid on that, please?
Yes, sir.
I didn't see it, it might have been in the resolution, but I didn't see it.
May I proceed forward? I'll bring you a copy.
I got a copy, I just didn't see it in the resolution.
Her vest is $539.90 plus the carrier, which is $69.
Okay, that's for clarification for me. Any further discussion? Call in favor, motion, uplift your right hand. I'm showing unanimous, Madam Kirk. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next, we have a resolution question authorization to renew service agreement to Replay System Incorporated, Mr. Don Ash. Good evening, Mr. Don Ash.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The item I have before you is a renewal agreement on our recording equipment, our digital recording public safety equipment, and it's with Replay System, who is a sole source provider of that type of equipment. The budgetary cost in it was planned in our 2013 budget as well, and I'm asking for approval to get it renewed for service agreements.
We have an exhibit in your book, number eight. We have a resolution, resolution of Henry County Board of Commissioners for execution of the renewal of a Replay System Incorporated service agreement for enhanced 911 center for fiscal year 2013, 2014. And it would be in the total amount of $23,831. Does somebody move that we accept this resolution? Approve this resolution? We have a motion from District Three to approve the resolution. Do we have a second from District Four? Any further discussion? Call in favor, raise your right hand. I'm showing unanimous, Madam Chair. Mr. Ash, you have the next one too, sir?
Absolutely. This is a revenue generator for us. This is our performance partnership agreement with Georgia Emergency Management. These are the funds that come down for the emergency management as a fund, a funding source through a grant through Jima. There's an in-kind match to this grant, and it's matched by salaries, training, and in-kind services. The amount of this grant is $61,177. Requesting permission to accept the PPA money, as well as the chairman to execute the documents.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Ash? If not, you have a resolution in Henry County Board of Commissioners for authorization to execute the performance partnership agreement with the Georgia Emergency Management Agency. The performance partnership agreement with Georgia Emergency Management provides funding in the amount of $61,177.00 for fiscal year 2013. Does somebody move in that direction? Have a motion from District Two.
Second.
Second from District Three. Any further discussion? Call in favor, lift your right hand. So move.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I could, if you would indulge me, at our last meeting, you mentioned about my weight loss, and I would be remiss if I didn't mention that, and appreciation to our county for supporting Weight Watchers. My staff and my team wanted to make sure we get that out for you.
That is a good testimony. Thank you so much. Next, we have Community Development Division, public hearing to consider the approval of the proposed 20, I'm going to say 2012, and I know this is correct because we back check that, 2012 Consolidated Annual Performance Report. So the 2012 is correct.
It is. It's our report of accomplishments for the 2012 program year.
Thank you. This is Ms. Shannon Butner.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. What I have before you all this evening is the 2012 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, commonly known as the CAPR. As a recipient of CDBG program funding, Henry County is required to submit to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development a consolidated annual performance and evaluation report for each program year. Excuse me. The CAPR provides HUD.
You need some water?
I'm okay, thank you.
I got some, I can throw it to you if you want to catch. You have to catch it.
It's open, but I haven't, I've been pouring it in a cup.
Yes, ma'am.
I apologize for that. The CAPR provides HUD and the residents of Henry County an opportunity to evaluate the overall progress of the CDBG program in carrying out priorities and specific objectives identified in the consolidated plan and the fiscal year 2012 annual action plan. It also describes actions, changes, and accomplishments during the 2012 program year resulting from the Community Development Block Grant Program funded through HUD. In program year 2012, Henry County received $850,267 in Community Development Block Grant Formula Grant funding to assist it in addressing the needs and priorities of the county. The county approved for the allocation of funding to 12 sub-receipients to carry out community development activities in attaining the goals and objectives from the five-year consolidated plan for 2012 through 2016. Table one, which I presented before you, identifies all of the CDBG activities awarded funding in the 2012 program year. CDBG funds have been obligated through the execution of sub-recipient agreements to date for the activities identified in bold in the table. At the time that this report was prepared, nine, nine of the sub-receipients had executed and had been, nine of the sub-recipient agreements had been executed, obligating $477,500 in 2012 CDBG funds, in addition to the $170,000 for program administration. Of those nine, six of those activities have been completed or were completed prior to the end of the program year, which was June 30 of 2013, expending a total of $127,500. Those six activities were all public service activities, and combined, those activities benefited 2,014 people during the program year. This table illustrates each of the six activities that were completed in 2012 program year. It also gives you the number of persons that were proposed to benefit from those services, and the actual number, and the percentage of persons which were low mod receiving benefit. As a reminder, low mod is our primary objective for the CDBG program. This is a public hearing. To date, we have not received any comments in regards to the CAPR. It was notice, a public notice was in the paper starting August 16th, so we have met our 30-day public notice period.
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Butner? If not, I would like to open the floor up for any citizen that would like to speak for or against or make comments of this proposed resolution. If not, we have a resolution before you, resolution approving the FYI 2012 Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report, CAPR, for the Community Development Block Grant CDBG program. Does somebody move to approve that? We have a motion from District One.
Second.
Have a second from District Four. Any further discussion? Call in favor, raise your right hand. So move. Thank you so much.
Chair, I would like to ask one question, and I was looking at it here and there. The first foundation, it showed proposed units 357, actual units 358. Can you, what turned that to 69%? Did they just get 6, what's the 69% represent?
The 69% is the number of low-mod persons that benefited from those services.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have a resolution question amendment to the policy regarding salary increases for interim appointments. Even though Michael Harris is presenting this, the board had requested that we review this, and just to give you a little background, we have two ambiguous pieces of legislation. One makes reference to four-step increases, which that was many, many years ago, when the county had increases in pay, and each increase represented 2.5%. In the past, the previous board changed that, and we now do not have step increases, so consequently, four increases would indicate it'd be a 10% increase, so if we don't have step increases, there's no longer a 10% red in there. We have another, in our personnel transaction, it makes reference that any employee who is appointed to work in an interim position where he or she performs the duties of a vacant existing position of a higher classification for more than two consecutive pay periods shall be temporarily moved to a higher class in salary range and receive a compensation due to the promotion as noted in this section. So having said that, we put together a resolution for the board's consideration that indicates that it will be a 5% increase only. And having said that, Michael, if you'd like to add something to this, you can, otherwise, it's, it's, I'm kind of putting you on the spot, bringing you up here, but somebody had to come before.
No, I think you've addressed.
And I appreciate you coming.
Sure. I think you've addressed all the wishes as delineated by the board, so.
So if somebody would ask questions, or?
I don't have a question, I got a comment. I know, and I read the, I'd read the previous resolution, and I believe that Chairman Maddox was the chairman at the time, and I looked at that. I feel like that on the interim basis, a lot of times, it's the person that is getting the interim, if they have a desire to do that job, they're basically getting a leg up on the, any competition, provided they do a good job at the time they're doing it. And so, I have no issues with that, I just feel like that, you know, we obviously have in the past and like to hire from within, however, I have no issue with the other. I just wanted to make the comment that, you know, at the time that was done, there was, there were other things going on at the time, so in this time, it's, you know, I just feel like it's time to make a move. There's going to be time to make a move on several issues, and that's just one of them. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else have any questions? If not, you have a resolution before you that Henry County Board of Commissioners formally implement the policy regarding a pay increase for interim position, and it's basically simple, it says the Henry County Board of Commissioners approve the policy regarding pay increase for interim position, giving employees a 5% salary increase for being appointed interim and assuming responsibility to that position. We have a motion from District Four. Second from District Two. Any further discussion? Call in favor, raise your right hand. I'm showing unanimous, thank you. Thank you, Mike, for coming up here. Thank you, Michael. Public comments, citizens allowed to voice counter-related concerns, only have one at this moment. Mr. Hires Benjamin, if you'll come up and just for record, state your, your name, address, even if I got it here, just for records, and you have, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board of the commissioners. My name is Benjamin F. Hires III. I live at 857 Summit Park Trail here in McDonough. That's a part of the Summer, Summer Lake Residential Community. Mr. Chairman, I have come here to call your attention to what appears to be a pattern bullying tactics, racial profiling, and filing false charges on the part of, and this is collective, the Community Homeowners Association where I live. To this point, no authority has been willing to accept responsibility for oversight and/or control of such associations. I'm sure that you've noticed that there have been several recent news stories concerning homeowners associations, some right here in Henry County, with an awful lot of improprieties. These associations operate under the laws of the state of Georgia, and for Henry County, they are filed through the county superior court system. Part of the reason I'm here, I am personally under current suspension for violation of the charge of failing to maintain the upkeep of my neighbor's property, in fact, cutting his lawn. I've got a letter from the board, homeowners association board, charging me with violation. I'm still under suspension for that violation. And yes, as I say, here in 2013, Henry County Superior Court Authority is being used against black homeowners for the failure to serve their white neighbors. I now request the Board of Commissioners to authorize the investigation of all community homeowner associations now operating within Henry County, which should include, number one, an audit of all financial records for the past five years. Number two, current compliance to the association's covenant. Number three, application of changes and updates to current community makeup and local and state housing laws. Number four, a thorough evaluation of the relative value and need for such associations as being different from the community neighborhood watch groups, which include policing and stand-your-ground laws. And finally, number five, a method of an annual scheduled public oversight review by the Henry County Board of Commissioners. Thank you for your opportunity to make this presentation to you.
Thank you so much. Do we have any commissioners that'd like to make a comment this time for any reason? County manager, would you like to make any comments at this time for any reason? County attorney, do you have any comments? Our upcoming meeting is Tuesday, October 1st at 9:00 a.m., and Tuesday, October 15th at 6:30 p.m., are regular board meetings. We have, I know at least one personnel issue that we need to discuss in executive session to be personnel only, so if somebody would move that we adjourn to executive session in accordance with the provision of OCGA 50-14-3. We have a motion from District provision of OCGA fifty-dash-fourteen-dash-three. We have a motion from District Four.
Second.
Second from District Two. Any further discussion? Call in favor, raise your right hand. So move. We are now going into executive session to discuss personnel issues.
Second.
Second from District One. Any further discussion? All, raise your right hand. Does somebody approve an affidavit and a resolution pertaining to executive session?
So move.
Have a motion, District Four.
Second.
Second from District Three. Any further discussion? Call in favor, raise your right hand. No further business. Somebody move, we adjourn.
So move.
Have a motion from District Four. Second from District Three. Any further discussion? Call in favor, raise your right hand. We stand adjourned. Thank you.